All right, call me in order, pledge allegiance, Councilmember White.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Larky?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
Councilmember Pryon?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Councilmember Richardson?
Here.
Councilmember McCallum?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
We have a quorum. Item D, professional appearances. Number one, Thomas Gartman. Come to there and identify yourself, address, name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you. Let's make sure the mic is on. That would be a good idea. Is it? Okay. My name is Thomas Gartman. I live at 12-825 South Spoon Creek Road, Leitha, Kansas, 66061. I am the Chief Financial Officer of Kansas Capital Group. We operate a route of no chance machines in the greater Kansas City area. I'm coming in front of this council to come out against the no chance ban that you are currently considering. We only have a few machines here in Belton. In fact, our one location is Fast Gas in Saks, 1509 North Scott Avenue. We have three machines there. However, we're obviously against completely removing the machines in any jurisdiction. These machines provide a lot of benefits to local businesses, thousands of dollars of revenue a month that they otherwise would not receive or reinvest into their businesses. And, you know, we come from Kansas City. I run my route in Kansas City. And as you heard last meeting, Kansas City banned our machines and we no longer operate in Kansas City. They did that specifically because they were targeting game rooms. People were renting out spaces in disadvantaged neighborhoods and just lining the walls with as many machines as possible. It's not a business that I do. I partner with retail locations, convenience stores, gas stations, laundromats, bars, liquor stores, and we place a few of them. One to five is normally where we stand, depending on the volume of play at the location. These game rooms in Kansas City, they were operating with no security, no partnership with law enforcement, no care for their neighbors, and they allowed people to gather in and around their businesses. Kansas City, as you know, unfortunately has a significant homeless problem. This became a gathering place for homeless people, to set fires, to sell drugs, to threaten local businesses. And Kansas City had to act to prevent this from happening. However, when they put their ban in place, they did not consult any route operator or any local business to understand the difference between a game room with 20 or 30 of these machines versus a convenience store who has three of them. And it has cost local businesses in Kansas City, Missouri, hundreds of thousands of dollars since the ban has been put in place. I know people have lost jobs, and I know that retail sales are down at these locations. The, as an example in Kansas City of the benefit that this money brings to the community, I do business with all of the Express Smarts that are up there. And they took the machine money that they had and they bought 5K security cameras. So they're able to do facial recognition on customers, and they provide that security camera footage to law enforcement, which has significantly improved law enforcement's investigative capabilities around these areas. I think the council should be proactive. It should consider regulation, limitation on the number of machines. Jackson County, Missouri, their legislature is working with us right now on the county level to do exactly that. And I would love to talk with you further to about what kind of regulation looks good for the city of Belton. I will be here for any questions afterwards if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Number one, Teresa McRoy. Or number two, I'm sorry. I said number one.
Hi, I'm Teresa McRoy. I own Paradise Bar and Grill in Belton. And you want my address?
Yeah, for the record, please.
My home address or the?
Home is fine.
908 Hargrove Road, Peculiar, Missouri. And I'm here today on the slots. Thank you allowing me for to come and speak. I am just asking if you guys would support a path to regulations for the slot machines. The slots have been a big revenue for us, like 15 to 20 percent. And that's not only slots, it's also food and liquor sales and beer sales. And it's helped tremendously being a small business owner. It's really tough out here, especially in this economy. And it's not only going to, if we have to take them out, it's not only going to hurt me, but it's going to hurt my staff as well because we have a lot of people that are coming that are just coming to play slots, and then, of course, they've started drinking and then they eat, of course. So it's been a really good thing for Paradise. So I'm just really asking if you guys would take a little more consideration and put some regulations. I'm all about regulations, doing whatever it takes to be able to keep the slot machines. So, thank you.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Item one, motion approving final reading of Bill 2025-63.
An ordinance approving a rezoning from C2 General Commercial to R3 Multifamily for a .87 more or less acre property located north of B Street between East Walnut and Chestnut Streets.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Lawson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Pryon?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Two, motion approving final reading of Bill 2025-64.
An ordinance adding Section 15-187 to Chapter 15 of the City of Belton Code of Ordinances relating to monetary prizes.
Present.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Go ahead.
I got a question for Chief Lyons on this. Was it true that we sent people out to see how many of these places we had? Of the gaming machines? How many places have the gaming machines?
The police department's not sent anyone out.
Okay. So we don't know any numbers of exactly how many we have in Belton? Joe?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, our community development department did a fact finding. We don't know that we've got all of them because they're not regulated, so we don't, nobody's told us where they all are. But they did go out and I believe they found, what'd you say, was it 13 places? I'll let Matt speak to that.
Yeah, there's 12 businesses and anywhere between 45 and 50 machines is our estimate. We counted 37 machines, but there were three businesses that were inaccessible when we went out. So we, based on the nature of those businesses, we anticipate there's probably about three at least in each of those. So estimating 45 to 50 machines total in the city.
So we have 12 places?
Yes.
I know my deal is, I think the regulation is the biggest key. And I would like to make a motion to table this, to see if we can come up with another way of the regulation and making something work. I just don't like, I think the way we went about this, I don't like. I don't like that we didn't go talk to these people. Nobody knew anything about this until the last second. So I'm making a motion to table this to see if there's anything else we can do.
Councilmember Richardson, would you like to make a motion to table or a motion to postpone? Obviously with a motion to table is not typically what the Belton City Council does because that involves then a secondary motion later on to bring it back.
Table to postpone.
So instead of motion to postpone, I apologize for the first meeting in, say, March? Would that be?
Yes.
Okay.
That'll work.
So we have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Postpone until March, first meeting in March.
We need a second, correct?
We have a second now.
Who was the second, please?
Alex.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to postpone to the second meeting in March. Any discussion on the motion to postpone?
I apologize, was it first meeting or second? I believe it was first.
First meeting, I thought. Is that what you said? First meeting in March. Go ahead.
Ken, you kind of, I think I understand that you're wanting us to look at other options instead of just banning completely?
Yes.
And so you're wanting time to be able to explore that? Is that my understanding?
I know there's, I mean, there's other states around here that have these, and they, there's some states that do. Nonprofits have to control them. I just think there's, I think we need to look into this a little bit more. I don't like the way we went about doing this. You know, I, I think we should have gone and talked to these companies, these businesses that have these and be like, hey, what, you know, what can we do to make this work? What can, what can we do for everybody to win in this situation?
I'm okay at the moment.
Go ahead, girl.
I have to agree with Chris. Two weeks ago at the last city meeting, we did not have the number of machines. There was no information, no number of, how many complaints. And I also feel we should have been more prepared if we were going to have this change. Also, I feel this is a state thing that needs to be done. I know it's a gray area, but I just feel it's a gray area and the state needs to change it. I would just note on the state regulation, there has been pushes from specifically communities like Riverside and North Kansas City for almost a decade now to make some sort of legislative clarification regarding the legality of these machines, and there has not been one. And given the kind of, given that track record, I would say that waiting on the state is most likely, we're going to be waiting most indefinitely at this point.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, I, you know, for, I, part of the reason I seconded here is because I think it would behoove us to look into potential regulation instead of only banning. Understand the position the city's in, and I agree completely that this is an unregulated entity that is in a business that is typically regulated, gambling, lottery, et cetera. So I agree that we do want to have some type of regulation at the very least. So I guess at this point, I think it would behoove us to look at some regulation and then come back and, you know, maybe we look at regulations, say, yeah, this isn't for us, and we come back to this. I don't know. But I think it makes sense to look at that first.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
If I may, I would make a recommendation from staff's perspective that we would ban these, make a consideration to bring it back when we have more information on what it would take to regulate them. Because these are essentially, I mean, they're gambling machines. You, you don't know what the next one's going to be once you push the button. You put money in trying to get money back. You'll notice that the two people that spoke in favor of this are not Belton residents, so that they're trying to make money on Belton residents doing, utilizing these machines. And I think that the city's ill-prepared to regulate. This is not the city's expertise. I don't know how we would go about, you know, making sure we could enforce that. Now, if, gambling is regulated at the state level. And heck, even one of the people speaking in favor of the machines called them slot machines. They're very different from, they're very similar to slot machines as it is. I do not believe that it's in the city's best interest to try to regulate it, at least not knowing what we know. They're not being regulated at this current moment. And so I would just ask that if you're going to consider getting us into the regulation business for this, you give us time to prepare for that. And, and so we would ban it and then come back and say, okay, if we come up with a way to regulate this adequately, then we can go ahead and allow these to take place.
Go ahead.
So you're asking us to ban temporarily while we're exploring the potential of moving to regulation?
I'd like to look into what it would take for us to regulate these before we make that, you know, and, and again, it's, we can, a business could bring in slot machines and that would be illegal. It would make them money, but it would be illegal. So I don't think that we should just allow these just because they're making businesses money because they're very similar to slot machines. And I don't, I think most people that utilize them may or may not know the difference between this and a slot machine. And so I think that the safest course of action to protect our public here in Belton would be for us to ban it now. Look what it would take and then come back and consider making these legal.
I guess I have a question. Because gambling is regulated by the state, are they going to regulate us regulating it? No. Again, the state has refused to regulate these for a decade. And as a charter city, the city of Belton has all authority of the Missouri Legislature when the Missouri Legislature has not acted. I understand that part of it, but if we come up with a list of regulations that we're going to impose on these machines who are really taking money from the underserved, you know, that, that's my opinion, will they, the state come back and say, no, you can't regulate it that way? Or is this an all hands off policy? I mean, no, the Missouri Gaming Commission, there are some opinions of members of the Missouri Gaming Commission that these devices do meet generally a definition of gambling. But at this point, the Missouri Legislature and the Missouri Gaming Commission has not acted, and unless there is a legislative change, will not act in any way, shape, or form regarding these machines. And I do, I do appreciate the fact that these, both these people had come and spoke. I appreciate that, but it's not lost on me that neither of them are from Belton, so.
Go ahead.
I'm just concerned about how much it's going to cost us if we try to regulate as far as additional staff, time. How would we even do it? And so I'm a little concerned about trying to even move in the regulation direction. I understand what, what the folks who've testified today or have spoken today have said, and I appreciate that. But I'm just concerned even, and I've read through what was presented to Jackson County and their legislature, but even at the cost of their fees, I'm not sure we can cover what it would take in order for us to regulate as a city. So I have some concerns about that.
Go ahead.
To be clear, I agree. I don't, I don't know that the city will be able to do such a thing as regulation. We might not have the staff, we might not have the funds, we might not have the resources available. But I don't agree that we should blanketly ignore and not look into it. So, you know, at the very least, we can look into it. If we find out, hey, we don't have the resources to make this available, then we move forward with what we think the best course of action is at that time. I just, you know, to the point, this is not necessarily something new. And, and I think it's worth a little extra time to look at. If, if we think three months is essentially what we're talking about here is too long. I mean, I'm okay with us looking at a shorter period of time to postpone it, but I still think it's not a bad idea to at least give this a once-over.
Go ahead.
I know you say that both these people aren't from Belton, but one's operating a business in Belton, which is bringing tax money to this city. So I feel like we should listen to her. My other question, Councilmember Thompson, what did you mean by the underserved? Is that, I mean, are they, that's who's playing these machines?
Well, I, I don't know, Christopher, I don't know, Councilman.
Uh, Councilman, I don't know who's playing it, but I just assumed that, so.
I don't assume that. I would want to know facts before I assume anything.
Well, that, that works.
Go ahead.
Can I ask other councilmembers?
Yeah, you can ask whatever you want.
So what are you thinking about?
As it pertains to the motion.
What are you thinking about Joe's discussion about banning for temporary while there's an investigation?
I don't know. You said you were looking to talk to other councilmembers. Who are you talking to?
I'm sorry, Councilman McCallum, Councilman Richardson.
Both of us?
Yeah. I'm just curious.
I, I'll just, Joe and the city, like I said, what they've brought before makes perfect sense. I understand the ideology behind it. It's an unregulated, you know, situation and something that is typically regulated. Makes perfect sense. I don't, you know, discredit that. I just also think that it's been in place for a decade or more, that these have existed, at least here in Belton, for a couple of years at the very minimum. And, you know, a couple more months for us to have a little more look is, you know, okay in my book.
I agree with Alex, too. I, I think banning them right off the bat, I think they should have probably had a plan in place to, to figure out a way to make this work. They've been here for, as Alex says, two years. I know of at least a year. I don't know, maybe some of them have been here longer than that, I don't know. But I've heard at least a year. And I know we're trying to reduce the crime issue if there's crime there, but there was no instances that we asked last week, that I asked, there was not a single instance that the police had been called to any of these places that they had a problem, so.
Go ahead. I thought Councilman McCallum was aware of one.
Not that the police have been called to.
Not that the police, I believe, you know, that was self-reported, self-contained, or whatever. I don't, we don't know because ultimately, as far as we know, the police were not involved.
Okay. He probably didn't intend to do this, but he opened my eyes to two things that have me uneasy continuing right now. And I'd be more for shutting it down now and still looking at it. I'm not saying no. But if they closed down all these big rooms in Kansas City, what's to stop them from opening up? We have a lot of, you know, they could open up a warehouse tomorrow and they'd be in place until March. And then that's great, they had extra money to buy really great cameras. Why did they need them? So that, that leads me to believe that their crime was up, so they needed better cameras. So I'd rather stop now and address it, and then if we decide to proceed, we can.
Go ahead.
Patrick, do you have a sense of what other cities have done? Like what sort of regulations are out there?
Yeah, and so I'll, I'll also answer this by kind of answering another question where, you know, the city didn't act for a year. That was because basically everybody was in a holding pattern while the Springfield litigation occurred. Honestly, that was when Springfield took the act to prohibit them in the exact same manner you all are, and then there was an immediate lawsuit. The smartest thing to do was always to wait to see how that kind of played out because honestly, then you're making, instead of the Belton citizens having to pay for litigation, the Springfield citizens are having to pay for that litigation, and then we'll hop on at the end. But as of basically October, which was when there was a federal case, civil, not criminal, but a jury did determine that these machines were gambling under Missouri law. So again, not criminal, just civil. Since that decision came down and since the decision in the administrative review decision for the Springfield versus, or Torch Electronics for Springfield, most cities that have taken action have taken the action of a complete prohibition. And kind of one of the similar things that is giving rise to a lot of these is the increased proliferation over the past about year. Typically, we saw these as one or two or three in a gas station. And then recently, there has been the move in focus of seven, eight, or nine of these in one facility where it becomes more casino-like. I do believe, based on Matt and his staff's review, there were two different facilities here in town that had over eight of these machines in them. But that, that, those actions and that kind of increased proliferation took this from what a lot of communities were doing, which was wait and see, sit back to, okay, now we do have to act and we're going to follow Springfield's model because Springfield's ordinance was upheld. And that is what Kansas City did. And like, just as Councilmember Pryon said, a not uncommon thing in regulation is if you are a city abutting, Kansas City, and Kansas City goes ahead and prohibits a use due to some sort of criminality, which is what they did with the no chance gaming machines, if you don't then act, what is most common is that they just open in the surrounding communities right at the Kansas City borders so that they can get the Kansas City market, but not the Kansas City regulations.
Go ahead.
I agree that I would not want a warehouse full of these in Belton, 100 percent. But anybody that's coming knows that we would have regulation coming. That they would be, understand that, hey, there's something coming out. And I don't know if we can regulate how many each business has, maybe give out so many business licenses for them. I'm just throwing some stuff out there, but I'm like, before we just ban it all together, talk to these businesses, you know? You're going to tell them, okay, we're not going to do anything for the next four months. They're going to be sitting there, and, you know, they might lose business over it, so.
Go ahead.
Can we, I know we've got several things floating out here, but can we put a moratorium on any new ones coming in until we make this decision?
There is the potential for placing a moratorium. That is not uncommon for newer land uses. You'll see it, actually, the city of Independence, the one that, just because I litigated it, I remember it, that they placed a moratorium on marijuana businesses, which didn't really make sense because they placed it before the DHS even issued licenses to run them. But it is not uncommon to place a moratorium. I would note that to place a moratorium on them, I guess we could do it by the 23rd, but it would be by ordinance and it would require a double read. Because, or else then it's just, you're placing a moratorium that doesn't go into effect until January 13th, and we're already going to bring it back up at the March 1st, the March 10th meeting. So it's only about a 30-day moratorium, when typically what you see is about 90 to six months is a typical moratorium timeframe.
Go ahead.
I guess I'll ask a question that I haven't heard clearly defined. What is the similarities and the differences with these machines and a slot machine?
Well, if you look at them, I mean, it is direct money feed into the machine. There is on most a small button in the corner where you can press to see whether or not you are going to win or lose on the next spin, but then you do spin. It is incredibly similar in look to a slot machine. There's the wheel spinning. I think even the Kansas City Star article directly pointed out that one of the businesses that had opened one of, similar to, I think there's two in town that are full no chance gaming places, even had 777. On the look of them, the thing, the argument and the only difference is that button on the bottom corner that instead of not knowing if you'll win or lose your next spin, you can press the button and see if you'll win or lose your next spin before you spin and before you put any money in. Now granted, the argument against them being gambling is that just because you saw that doesn't mean you go, you stop playing. You could then say, oh, well, the next one after this one's going to be the winning one, so I'll go ahead and press this one, run that one through, and then choose the next one, but.
Okay, thank you for that. So a couple of things I know. I have not had any residents reach out to me concerned about these machines. I've also not had any residents reach out to me in favor of these machines. And as much as I like to hear that local businesses are, are having increased revenues for them and it's, it's supporting them, if you're in something like Paradise Bar and Grill and you're familiar with working in a heavily regulated industry, right, with products that are regulated, and a company comes in and says, hey, we've got these machines, they're going to help you with revenue. Don't worry about it, it's a gray area. To me, that's predatory. I'm not a big fan of that. So if we want, I don't think we're in the position to fine-tune regulation and find a solution, starting here in Belton, that the state level, you know what I mean, is going to adopt. We're just wading into murky waters without a plan. So my biggest hang-up here is that I haven't heard from residents in favor of allowing them or in favor of banning them, but just at the surface, I think this is not something that we want to encourage in Belton and allow to go unregulated, is my point of view.
I would also note, Councilmember Lawson, you brought up a really good point with the saying that they are legal. That St. Louis County case, federal case that I noted, most of that case dealt with a provider of these gaming devices being found, and it is, that is being appealed, but being found liable for $500,000 in damages by making the statement that they were legal when the jury found that they were not and that they were gambling devices under Missouri. by making the statement that they were legal when the jury found that they were not, and that they were gambling devices under Missouri law.
Yeah, just doing a quick news search on these types of devices and the companies that are putting them in businesses, it's, it's rife with issues.
The Missouri Independent, if any of the council members are members of the public watching, the Missouri Independent has done a very good job of covering a lot of these issues very in-depth.
Go ahead.
I'm not to, I'm not, not to lose your point at all, but just as another point of reference, Jackson County has put in specific regulation. It's actually a pretty interesting read, so Belton's not necessarily the first looking at it, right? And it's a, it's a pretty interesting read, because they, through their ordinance, mentioned several things, I think, that we've talked about. But ultimately, you know, it's not a full ban, it's a regulation.
I would just note that Jackson County's authority on most of that extends only to unincorporated areas of Jackson County. So most, so like Kansas City's banned them. So half of Jackson County already has a complete and total prohibition. Jackson County, the Jackson County Legislature's ordinance, even if it is regulated, there are decisions coming down from other municipalities in the Jackson County area that the affected business of tho, those regulations would almost probably be in population size smaller than the City of Belton.
Call the question.
We have a call for a question.
The current question is the motion to postpone.
I'm just making, yeah, the current question is the motion to postpone until the first meeting in March. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. Motion passes. So since we made a motion to amend, and the motion to amend passed to postpone, we are done. Item three, motion approving final reading of the Bill 2025-65.
An ordinance amending Chapter 13, Article 12, parades and processions, and Appendix A schedule of fees and charges of the Code of Ordinances to update and improve the effectiveness of the parade code.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Pryon?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item four, motion approving final reading of the Bill 2025-66.
An ordinance approving the Belton, Missouri Police Department Municipal Jail 2025 housing contract for inmates of the Lake Winnebago, Missouri Police Department.
Present.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Pryon?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Aye. Motion passes. F, new business, one motion approving the first reading of Bill 2025-67.
An ordinance approving a final plat for GEP investments, a two-lot subdivision on 11.88 more or less acres located at 17327 South Outer Road in the City of Belton, Missouri.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You're up.
Yep, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before this, we need is a final plat for GEP investments, which covers the existing TransWest property at 17327 South Outer Road, and the cell tower at the northeast corner of the property. The purpose of this plat is to replat the property to add a second lot, to allow the cell tower to be separated from TransWest. This will allow the cell, cell tower owner to own the property outright and no longer lease, which protects the cell, cell towers' long-term interest in the site, since it accommodates five carriers. Access to the cell tower is accommodated through an access easement to Belray Drive to the north, and the cell tower is planning to modify their access drive to better align with the easement after ownership, after ownership change. The Planning Commission reviewed the final plat on November 18th and recommended unanimous approval of the plat. Staff also recommends approval, and if there are no outstanding questions or concerns this evening, staff requests a second reading to allow the final plat to be signed for final recording and the ownership change to take place for the cell tower.
Go ahead.
Okay, I know I asked about this during the work session, but I'm still a little confused at which area we're specifically talking about. I'm familiar with that area as a whole. When I look at the map that provided, is there, what, can you give me a little more detail on where, what's being carved out? Because I understand the cell tower is being carved out, I just want a better.
Yeah, so on page 13 of the agenda packet is the final plat document. It's really just that northeast corner where it says Lot 1B, and then you'll see a line going to the west. So it's roughly a 20, it looks like 26-foot strip that then connects to that access easement. So essentially, it's the cell tower and then the access drive that gets to the access point to Belray Drive.
Okay, so it is almost, with the exception of that small strip of driveway, essentially.
Yeah.
It is, it is really just that cell tower.
Yes, it's a, it's a small piece of property.
Okay, and, well, I actually have another question, but I will hold on that for a more appropriate time. That will likely come in a minute.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Motion for a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a second reading. Any discussion on the motion for a second reading?
What is the purpose of the second reading?
We have the final plats ready to be signed. They also are hoping to get this done soon, so they can start with the access drive and take ownership of the cell tower itself.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
And this is up to you guys to decide, but this is the, this one motion is the difference between having a meeting on December 23rd and us being able to cancel the meeting on December 23rd and being able to come back in January. I'm just putting it out there.
Well, you should have led with that.
So I understand that. That is a, that is a very good point. It's especially a good point for not only everybody sitting in this room, the city staff and, and us as council and all that. However, we have seen residents, people who live here, bring forward, you know, amendments to subdivisions and those things, and those, those had to wait on their second reading, two weeks later, you know, whatever the situation is. I just don't think the canceling of one meeting close to Christmas is a really good reason for us to move forward with a double reading on a rezoning, that, you know, for all I know, there's something out there, somebody, the purpose of that, you know, two readings over time is to give somebody an opportunity, as we experienced tonight, to come talk. I just don't think this is a good reason not to.
I would note for the council, this is actually the approval of a plat. This is not a rezoning. Plats are ministerial. There is nothing that a member of the public could say to you that would legally allow you to vote no.
Sorry, I misspoke on the zoning. Touche, thank you.
Please don't ever vote no on a plat that meets all of our requirements.
Go ahead.
So, that was my thing, was it is one person's land, they're breaking off the antenna in case they ever want to sell the rest of the land and just keep the antenna or the cell tower. It doesn't affect anyone, it doesn't hurt anyone.
So, I guess on that, that note then, I have a question. If I look at recent things that we've looked at from a resident perspective in Ward 1, we had a, we had someone, was that not just a replating that was a subdivision? Was it something more than that?
I'm not sure which one you're.
I can't remember the name, but it was, it was out on, I think, it's off of Kentucky.
But yeah, I mean, any plat, the double read makes a ton of sense from the city council's perspective, because it is purely ministerial. I always give the same speech. There was a case in the City of Kansas City, Furlong versus City of Kansas City, involving a plat for a McDonald's, a Burger, a Burger King, a Sonic, a BP gas station, and a car wash on minor and homes. The City of Kansas City turned down the plat, even though it met all of their requirements. The end of that lawsuit is that I filled up my car at that BP gas station, I've eaten at that Sonic, I've eaten at that Burger King, and I've washed my car, and the City of Kansas City had to pay him $900,000. So when it comes to plats, if they meet our requirements, we have no ability to say no.
I, I understand that. Is it subdivision? So that was a subdivision, right? That was taking two, that was taking one property, turning it into two.
Yeah, I believe the property you're talking about was on Kentucky, and there were some other ordinances along with that because there was a, a water agreement with the City of Raymore. So there were some additional documentation that came along with that.
Okay, I just, I, I just, I just don't like double readings, but okay.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Motion approving the second reading of Bill 2025-67.
An ordinance approving a final plat for GEP investments, a two-lot subdivision on 11.88 more or less acres located at 17327 South Outer Road in the City of Belton, Missouri.
Present. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Pryon?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
McCollum?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Two, motion approving Resolution 2025-92.
A resolution approving a billing services agreement between the City of Belton Fire Department and EMS Management and Consultants, Inc., for ambulance billing and collection services.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Go ahead, you're up. It's getting cold in here.
It is. That's what the world's. Thank you, Councilman Mayor. So as stated, this resolution is for billing services for our EMS service that we provide to the public. Currently, we've been using the, the billing service that we have since 2019. We just thought it would be a good idea to make sure that we're getting the best deal possible for what we're getting, and we went out and looked at a couple of other companies, as well as reaching out to the current company to ask them to resubmit a, a proposal to us, which they didn't actually ever get back with us. And so we are choosing to change it out. We feel it's going to be a better deal, so I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Chief Chad Wright just to kind of hit on a couple of those highlights, and then see if you have any questions.
Good evening, thanks. Yeah, just to highlight, like he talked about, several months ago, we started the valuation process for our EMS billing and other things that come, could come with it, and ultimately, what works best for us, the city. And a couple of things that we, we found, that we found, we identified several things, areas that EMS MC could benefit us in. Primarily, we were able to, through this, add to our reporting software program through their partnership with ImageTrend or relationship with ImageTrend, but also by doing that, it rolls that into this agreement. And so that ultimately eliminates it from our line item budget. The biggest selling point to it is they came back at a rate of 5.65%, where we've been paying 5.95% since 2019. So on our estimated revenues, it's a pretty significant savings with added benefits. Some of the other benefits is an improved public-facing portal for citizens to utilize. There is better management dashboards and tools for finance and for us, whereas we can also see performance insights both through billing, but also on the calls. With that, and part of the ImageTrend package that is getting added to it, is we'll have both internal and external public facing, facing dashboards that can, you know, paint a picture of what we're doing, real-time data, adding those insights. They have significant partnerships with other companies, and PWW is one law firm that specializes in EMS nationally that they utilize to help build their compliance with all the CMS regulations as well. So those are just a few of the highlights. Probably, most importantly, aside of all the benefits, is it's a, it's a pretty decent cut in the rate. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead.
Thank you for that, work you did on that. That sounds like needed change based on our current provider not even responding back to us. And in regards to, I'm always looking for efficiencies, right? I know that there's a reason, and I'm your, but can you help me understand the reason behind why we have two different systems for handling of billings, you know, why, why we would need it different for the fire? Because maybe we could all be, get it all in the same with the city, based on what you're describing, we could get some better rates.
I can't answer to the city and, and the other areas, but as far as EMS and ambulance billing, having it outsourced, if you will, there is significant gain to having that power as a group, but also staying on top of the ever-changing landscape of medical billing, which gets more and more complex every day. And so someone like Casey could probably.
I know, I know, I did.
It's highly specialized, and so there's a lot more liability in how you bill, play things like Medicaid and Medicare. A ton of liability on us, and if you don't know medical billing, it's, yeah.
For the, for the record, I did ask the question at, at you, Chad, but I was also, you know, looking at Casey sideways over there too, when I said it, but.
I looked.
But basically, you know, if, if there's ever an opportunity for increased efficiency, if there, there's probably not even a program out there that would do both, you know, in, in terms of efficiency, because I understand, like you're saying, highly specialized, but just, just food for thought.
Do you want to get into the medical billing?
Actually.
That went the wrong way.
Well, Chief Sapp and I did talk about that, and I crunched the numbers, and it really would not behoove us to get into the medical billing. I know that we, a long time ago, billing was done in City Hall, and there was a reason that they outsourced it. I, I don't want to, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, there was approximately, I mean, there was approximately 4,200 runs last year that we sent out for billing, and when you're dealing with insurance and then all the compliance that goes with it on the medical side, that, yeah, so. The other thing I did want to add, sorry, is just, I think it's important, is like, we always try to look at industry standards and what other people are doing too. And this, this company is one that Lee Summit, City of Lee Summit's using, Johnson County, Kansas, Raytown Fire, South Metro, just here, and a large portion of the St. Louis metropolitan agencies as well, so.
I'll just add, I'm actually really glad I asked the question then, because it sounds like it is something we looked into, and it's not something that makes sense at this current time. So I'm actually really glad to hear that response.
We've had those discussions, and if you look at what we have to compensate them, we're compensating them $90,000, and you want to hire somebody that knows exactly what they're doing in this, and you're not going to save much, and then on top of that, you're going to have to invest in the software for the billing and the connections, and so really, it probably would actually cost us more.
Perfect, thank you. That's what I needed to know.
Go ahead.
And this is more directed at the city attorney. And as part of the, the contract, it states that we can do arbitration, which I've already expressed my opinion about arbitration, but that it would take place in North Carolina, shall take place in North Carolina, Charlotte, North Carolina, and then any other location is mutually agreed, and then also any arbitration award would have to be enforced through the Western District of North Carolina. Is there a reason that we're going to North Carolina when the contract does specifically state Missouri law applies?
Yes, and that is because this was done via cooperative purchasing, so the city's ability and authority to tell them to amend or change the contract was significantly limited.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Three, motion approving Resolution 2025-093.
A resolution approving the master services agreement between the City of Belton Fire Department and the Fairly Consulting Group LLC for professional services related to the preparation of reports for the Missouri GEMT Medicaid Managed Care Program.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second.
All right, so we've talked a few times about GEMT. That's a, it's a supplemental payment program that we've participated in since 2018. It gives us a fair amount. It's gotten us anywhere from $200,000 to $400,000 a year on that. This is actually a new portion of the program that honestly, nobody knows much about. And so the managed care, and Medicaid is a very, it's a very consistent source of payment for us, but they tend to be the lowest payment. So that's why the supplemental program is nice. We have to turn in a whole bunch of data showing what it costs us, where we can come up with a per-call cost on the ambulance service itself, and then we get reimbursed so much a call on the number of Medicaid calls, but it excludes managed care Medicaid. So this new program will include that, which is going to add a significant number of calls, which by Fairly Consulting, who we've used for multiple different things over the last two or three years for GEMT, it will also make a, a significant increase in the amount of money we get back. It's going to be a new venture. We're going to try this out for a year to see how it goes, because they haven't even finalized the way that we're going to actually submit that data and what that report looks like. But we're, we're using him for that compilation of. But, uh, we're, we're using him, uh, for that compilation of the data and turning it in, just because he's got a lot of, uh, he's got a lot of background in that, and has been very successful in some of the issues we've had with our current G M T. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? You don't have one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dang, guy me speechless. Four, motion approving Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine four.
A resolution creating a travel, training, and economic development advisory committee for the City of Belton.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion, you're up, sir.
Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, before you tonight is a resolution, uh, to kinda formalize what we discussed during work session last meeting, which would be to essentially create a, uh, kind of a committee of, uh, three council members, or a mayor and two council members, and the city manager, economic development director, to kind of formulate a travel, training, and economic development, um, policy for the city. We don't really have an established policy for deciding who goes to what training, what kind of, um, uh, travel rationale we utilize, who goes to vet economic development possibilities, those types of things. And, um, as our city continues to grow, and as there are many training opportunities available to the council, um, finding a way to formalize that, um, could be, you know, it's just another way for us to be accountable to the residents. So, um, that's essentially what's before you, and so I'd be glad to stand for any questions.
Go ahead. You got it? You got it?
Yeah, um, maybe not so much a question, but I am interested in forming this as kind of a check and balance on these types of decisions. Um, and I would be very interested in serving on this committee. That's who needed to hear that, so, right.
I'm taking notes.
Thank you, okay. You all heard that dibs, okay.
And just, just for, just for clarification, this is not appointing the committee, this is essentially the resolution which would allow us to form, form it, and in a future meeting, we would have a potential process for getting onto the committee, which I assume would follow most of the other committees, um, that we have for the city, which would be a mayor appointing with the council approving.
Patrick, is dibs legally binding?
Unfortunately, in this, in this circumstances, dibs is not. Um, the mayor has significant discretion in his appointment authority.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to volunteer too.
You're talking to the wrong person.
He told us that, but it didn't stop me.
Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, one motion, non-debatable to approve the recommendations noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action. Present.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Communication from City Council. What?
He didn't pull anything.
Oh. Councilmember Johnson.
I attended the, uh, mayor's, uh, Christmas tree lighting, I thought it was a great event, um, I think things went very well, I think the choir was well received. Uh, I think everybody had a good time, um, and we're, the coalition is, is still having events, um, next Saturday, and the twentieth as well, or this coming Saturday, and the twentieth as well, there'll be a wassail lock, and then a cardinal scavenger hunt with a prize at the end for the person who finds all of the cardinals. Um, and that's all I've got, and wishing everybody happy holidays.
Councilmember McCollum.
So, I guess before I go, I wanna double check, does this mean we are officially not having a meeting on the twenty-third?
This means we are likely going to cancel it, I don't wanna formally say we're gonna cancel it yet, just to make sure that there's nothing that comes down the pike that's emergency in the next ten days or so.
Sure, that's fair, okay, well, let me start then by saying, I wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays, um, and, uh, Happy New Year, and hope it goes well, uh, for everybody as they, um, enjoy this holiday time. I also, uh, I, so we, I've, I've been loving the fact that we have so much going on on Main Street around the holidays. Um, the light parade was a lot of fun, and there was a lot of people that came out despite the chilly weather. Uh, the carolers were absolutely fantastic for the mayor's Christmas tree lighting, the, the, and which, by the way, the tree looks great, and just downtown looks great, and I just, you know, it's just a wonderful time to be in Belton. Um, the T D D Board is taking Christmas off as well, uh, so the next meeting will be in January. Um, and I do have a lot of updates from Parks, but I'm gonna stick to twenty twenty-five. So they have a lot of stuff coming in, well, mostly stick to twenty twenty-five. Uh, they have a lot of stuff coming in January, I will hold most of it until January to talk about, but, um, this next weekend, so not this weekend, but next week, in the twentieth, there will be, um, picnic with Saint Nick, uh, on Saturday, uh, the, the twentieth, then, um, then the same day, kids can shop for presents, um, at High Blue. Uh, um, and then, on January sixth, uh, which will be before our next meeting, is a benefit bingo taking place on Tuesday from one to three, uh, bring shampoo, deodorant, body wash, and you can get a bingo card, and the more items you bring, I guess the more cards you get. So, just a fun event that will be taking place before we meet again, and then just expect my, we'll have a long list come January. Alright, that's everything I got.
Councilmember Richardson.
I was not able to, uh, go to the mayor's Christmas tree lighting, it was a long work weekend, sorry about that. Um, I was at the, uh, Christmas light parade, um, being that it starts at our house. Um, it was cold, um, we had a lot of floats in there, we had a lot of, lot of vehicles in there, um, police started it off there, uh, fire. Parks was in there, was Public Works in there, I didn't see you guys.
I'm not sure if they made it or not, I was unable to be there.
Okay, I didn't see them, but I know you guys usually do, but I think Parks came in second, is that right? Well done, so, and I appreciate all the police being there, manning the, uh, barriers and doing that, and, uh, great night. So, thanks, and Merry Christmas to everyone out there.
Echoing all of that, um, but a special shout out to the snow machine, Parks breaks out, because that is very fun. Um, and the high school choir sounded really good at your tree lighting, so, Happy Holidays, everybody.
Uh, I would like to thank Councilman McCollum for the chance at no meeting in two weeks, so thank you very much. I will echo yet again, cause they were, they were that great, the choir really stood out, I thought they were awesome. Um, I was sorry I couldn't make the lights parade, I was out of town, but I did make it to the mayor's Christmas tree lighting, and it was pretty good. The guy flipping the switch was questionable, but he had helpers, so.
I had helpers.
Yeah, the helpers bailed him out for sure, and Happy Holidays to everyone.
Councilmember Davidson.
Um, we actually had a homeless committee meeting, um, to discuss the warming shelters again for Heart and Hand. It's a great thing to be involved with, it's, it's very rewarding to be there. If you guys can even donate four or five hours of shit, would be great. Um, I did go to Blue Wellness for bingo with my granddaughter, she won. And I also was at the light parade, and I was happy to see all the TV coverage. We had coverage in the morning, we had two news stations that night, there was lots of people, even though it was, it was cold. But, um, a lot of people came together, the different groups, and really helped the Belton Welfare Association out with stuff, so, thank you.
Um, I was, uh, I've been at the train, but I, I have to say thank you to Hy-Vee and Q T for the hot dogs, for the Christmas tree lighting. I really wanna thank the city, and Andrea, and all the stakeholders that made us, um, available to give a very generous check to the Belton Welfare Association. I, we had seventy people ride on two different trains this last weekend, in miserably cold weather, and I asked most of them if this is the first time they've been in Belton, and it was. And a lot of them came to the mayor's Christmas tree lighting, so I know that that's a reciprocal thing for us to have, for people riding the train to come over onto our Main Street, so I really appreciate that, and I would prefer sixty-five degree weather for the next two weekends, if no one minds. And, um, but Andrea did excellent, the, the water hauling job was monumental, but I thought it turned out real nice.
Councilmember White?
I don't have anything, thank you, Merry Christmas to all.
Uh, alright, uh, first of all, I wanna thank Andrea and her husband and her son for everything they did the other night to Mary's Christmas tree. Uh, thank you, tell them thank you. Uh, kudos to what everybody else is saying about everything, I mean, the parade and everything was great. We received an award today at the Chamber Award, uh, so anybody can come look at this, I don't know where we'll put it, but we received an award for excellence presented to the City of Belton, who provides outstanding service in the community of Belton, Missouri, and/or Cascano, Missouri, and recognizes making a significant contribution to the well-being of the community and its citizens twenty twenty-five. So, we received that today, so. Go ahead, go ahead.
The Lions, who cooked our hot dogs, it was what group?
The Bell Ray Sunrise Lions.
Yeah, they excellent job cooking four hundred and fifty hot dogs, so.
So, anybody else? Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, just a couple procedural things, one, uh, obviously if we do cancel the twenty-third meeting, which is highly likely at this point, the next council meeting would be on, uh, January thirteenth, so we would have a nice big, bit of a break there, um, for everybody. Of course, thereafter, we will also have a, a work session for budgeting, it's that, it's that time of year, we're during the, in the mix of the budget. Um, I know our finance department's been working hard on it for the last, you know, so many months even, and, uh, trying to get that into shape, so we can get it out to you guys individually before the end of this calendar year, so you guys have time to review it before we get into our workshop. And so, that's, that's shaping up nicely, um, and then also the City Hall, City Hall and X, the city offices will be closed, uh, as a holiday for Wednesday, December twenty-fourth, Thursday, December twenty-fifth, obviously for Christmas, and then Thursday, January first, so, that's it.
Anybody else? Alright, items for review and discussion. Item one, municipal separate storm sewer system. You would have to run our night, wouldn't you?
So this is our annual stormwater management program update. I know you guys all look forward to this meeting, because this is the time I make the presentation, I've done it several times, and you've heard it many times, and so I'm sure some of you can just run up here and say, boy, I'd like to do that for you, Greg. If you want to, step right up. It's the same information, it's just, uh, part of what we do, is we give information over and over again to keep educating people to remember about stormwater. Stormwater is very important, uh, believing, a lot of people have a hard time believing that stormwater is actually permitted, but Missouri Department of Natural Resources, so the City of Belton does hold a permit for stormwater. And so we are required to check every outfall during our permit time, and every year, we have to check so many. This is the year that we are actually going checking them all, there's two individuals out there, looking at them right now, and trying to get them all viewed, the best time is, of course, in the winter time, when all the leaves are off and the snakes are gone. And so, but it is something that's important for us to do, we have to hold a permit, any violations of permit is something that we get fined for. Uh, so, our permit is, uh, going right now, it actually ends, uh, this next year, and we're gonna go start the renewal process in April, and we'll go through about August before we get ourselves a new permit. Uh, all the outfalls, there's five hundred outfalls, are gonna be mapped, we're gonna look at them, we're actually finding ones we never knew existed. And that's basically a location where water leaves someone else's property and goes into a creek or a stream that we have to, uh, look at. It may not be the creek or stream that we own, but it's still something where it leaves one person's property and goes into these creeks, we have to actually go and inspect them all. Uh, and part of what we do is, we also hold events throughout the year, trying to get people to clean up streams. So if you ever wanna go out and clean up streams, just let us know, and we'll get you signed up to do it. Um, there are six, uh, controls that we always look at, these are the things that D N R requires us to do, and we're gonna just step through them real rapidly here for you, cause I'm sure you know them all really good. The first thing we do is public education and outreach, uh, we go through, and we tell everybody about how they're supposed to do stormwater, how they're supposed to take care of, whether you're a homeowner, whether you're a contractor. If you'd like us to come out and do outreach for you, we'd be more than happy, I have a young man who goes out and is training all the people who work for the city right now, to make sure everyone in the city has heard the same speech. His speech is about thirty minutes long, we're gonna try to make this about five minutes long, right Casey? Uh, it, uh, but we teach about B and P's, best management practices, how do you handle water? So one of the things is, if you come out to our lot, you'll notice that we do have an island that's got holes in the curbs, it's a place for water to go to, so the oil that comes off your car can go into these spots. We have natural plants in them to absorb the oil, so the water leaves cleaner. So when a developer comes in and says, why do I have to put these B and Ps in, why do I have to do these things? I'm doing it myself on my lot, and so we're an example of what you do, so no one can say, well, the city doesn't do it, well, I've done it to our lot. Second thing is always, uh, for, uh, public participation, public participation, and, and this is always really good, it's, uh, if anybody ever has a comment, we have a place where you always can comment for our MS four permit, you can bring it in, we make presentations to everybody, anybody ever wants one, uh, we used to do one live, uh, and I think Councilmember Lawson is the only person that's on it when we did about four years ago, she listened to us actually presenting, I believe. Uh, but it's another thing that we do to track involvement and try to get the public involved in doing it. Uh, illicit discharge, illicit discharge is a big item for us, we haven't done as much tracking and enforcement in, in the past as we have. This next year, we're gonna have to be more involved, more diligent in it. Uh, we had one person who was a big illicit discharge person in town, who was changing oil on the street, dumping oil on the street, and it was going into our stormwater, which goes into creeks, which go where all the fish and all the wildlife are. And so, uh, but it also includes people who decide to scrape paint off their houses, or cars, or anything else, and just drops paint on the ground, you can't do that, you can't have oil dropping off your vehicles. Uh, all these things is things that we're gonna have to be more diligent in trying to get, uh, get clean and make sure people aren't doing it. We've had businesses have discharges out of their businesses, and they dump stuff out, and we have to, uh, go and talk to them and get them to stop doing those items. Uh, if anybody ever sees them, feel free to contact us about that. Uh, construction site stormwater runoff, uh, this is another one that you may get calls on. This is where we make them put silt fences up, put their gutter buddies in, where we stop the silt from leaving people's sites. Erosion's a big deal, we don't want water to leave the ground that you're working on, and go into someone else's pond or creek, and fill it in, and silt things in. Uh, it also destroys our stormwater system, because it goes into our pipes, and then we have to spend a lot of money trying to clean it out, get that dirt out, and put that dirt back somewhere where it belongs. And so, we have to inspect these things, verify them, and stay on top of them. It also includes them dragging mud out of their sites and putting it on their streets, so that's how come we're always after people who are, uh, doing construction work. And it's, we're not favorites, a lot of contractors in town. We also do post-construction, so a lot of times, we, uh, have detention ponds in neighborhoods, and those detention ponds become the ownership of the HOA, uh, those ponds have to be maintained in perpetuity, they, they will always exist. A lot of HOAs wanna dissolve and say, we don't wanna be in HOA anymore, but they forget they own that pond, someone has to own that pond, someone has to maintain that pond, the city does not maintain those, they have to maintain those ponds. And so we have to regularly check them, see what's going on, and then get back to the HOA to make recommendations to have them cleaned out. And that is something that we do get calls on. Then we do, uh, pollution per, uh, prevention at our own facilities. Part of what we would do is, we go through and inspect all our facilities, make sure that we're not in violation, that we don't have cans of paint where it could leach out and go into a creek, or, you know, even our own salt building, we make sure the salt's pushed into the building, so then the salt's leaching out through, um, to the, uh, into the waterways. And so inspecting our buildings is an ongoing process, is something that we continue to do every year. This is basically where our stormwater process is, we have to have a permit for D N R. Anytime there's a violation of it, um, if someone else is at fault, they, uh, can get fined for it. If we're not taking action against it, then D N R fines us. Uh, it's something that D N R's on very hard, it's something that's very difficult to keep track of, because it's, even if you look at business that have, uh, their trash can, and the trash blows out of their trash can and goes into a creek, that is a violation, and so, we have to stay on top of all our creeks all the time, make sure they're clean of waste and debris. Happy to answer any questions that you have about it.
Go ahead.
Can you remind us where we're at with the street sweeper, wouldn't we want clean streets with all of this?
Uh, please, uh, s- street sweeping is one avenue that you can use to, uh, to get points or, uh, in your plan. It's not a requirement to be in anybody's plan for an MS four permit, so it is not included in our permit.
Okay, but our street sweeper's broken, correct?
We don't have a street sweeper anymore, it's gone.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, I got distracted by the street sweep, oh, do we have a, I mean, do we have a map of all of our creeks? Or what council's a creek, is it, is it a, have to be an officially recognized, like, I, I'm, cause we have a lot of little creeks, right?
Right, so, basically what we're talking about is any place where, if you think about a parking lot in any business you go to, if it doesn't have some sort of storm sewer that hooks up and goes to, you'll see, someplace where the, uh, concrete, the curb has like a little outfall, like a little, like waterfall out, where that water leaves that property and goes. has like a little outfall, like a little waterfall out, where that water leaves that property and goes into a common property, that is considered a creek, that's an outfall.
Boy, we got a lot of those.
Yes, we do, and I got two staff members that think that there's a lot more than we never thought.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, sir. All right, I would.
Nice job.
What?
I said, nice job.
I would entertain a motion to enter executive session, discuss, manage, retain illegal actions according to Missouri State Statute 610.021.1. Pertain to leasing, purchase, sell of real estate according to Missouri State Statute 610.021.2. Pertain to negotiated contracts according to Missouri State Statute 610.021.12. If the record be closed in a meeting adjourned from there. Present. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember McCollum?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Bryan?
Aye.
Mayor Larkin?
Aye, motion passes.